August 31st, 2021, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Could I ask, Madam Chair, that we remain standing and offer a moment of silence for the 13 brave soldiers gave their lives to save innocent people?
How do I get my picture up there? Just click on it?
Thank you.
That's actually not used, is it? Okay.
All right, we're going to do a couple of things quickly first, just a reminder to, is Joey, Joe DiNardo won?
Joe did not join yet.
Okay, so we have, joining virtually online is John Paul Fegment's Select Board Member in person, Don Chaffey, Mary Ashcroft, and Sharon Russell. The orders have been signed by the three of us present, so JP, if you could get in or Joe can get in to sign, that's great, but otherwise they're ready to go. And we have-
So I'm by the office on a frequent enough basis, I can get them signed up quick.
Yes, yeah, you are, okay, thanks JP. And then the Select Board minutes of August 17th. Well, is there a motion to accept?
Show move.
Made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay, motion carries and the minutes are approved. All right, so we have top of the agenda, which is not, it's sort of down under new business. The board to meet with representatives for the Diamond Run Mall property, we'll take that up now. And we have online a number of folks who are joining us, we have Steve Wolf, who is, I'm not sure of your title, Steve, but you're with Spartan Arena, Castleton State College, right? And you'll know that's-
Director of Spartan Arena.
Castleton University, I'm sorry, I'm old school, didn't call it normal school, so I guess that's an improvement. Also, we have Jonathan Spiro, who is the president of Castleton University. We have Ed Carr, who is with BAI, am I correct?
More correctly, HZ Real Estate.
Okay.
We manage the mall for BAI, Rutland.
Okay, good. And do we have anyone on phone that's going to participate, Bill?
Nobody else that looks at it.
Okay. All right, so you'll recall Select Board that we sent a letter to BAI and they passed it on, obviously. And we shared it with Castleton University, it was outlining some of the difficulties we saw with the closed mall. It included the active use, apparently, of the interior for either housing or a skate park. And we had pictures that we sent along. BAI was responsive and reached out to the town. There was a meeting, I think, well, there were some phone calls, I've also had discussions with Castleton University. And there was a meeting with the fire chief, the police chief, our town administrative assistant to the Select Board and BAI officials doing a walk around to try and figure out what to do to better secure the property. I will say, at the same time, we asked our town attorney to look into the status of security there and the security requirements. And we received a memo from him that outlined, the Act 250 permit was never changed, okay? So there is an Act 250 requirement to provide security at the mall. And there was, I went through the minutes, two years' worth of minutes, and found reference to an executive session. And then the week after that, there was an invoice presented from the town for security services to BAI. And this was in September of 2019. So it was presented, BAI paid it, and we have not billed for those security services since. So I asked Bill to rough out an invoice for us to cover the calls that we have had to the mall. And I have that here and it's going to await Select Board action probably sometime later in the meeting. So that's the background of where we are. I think, though, based upon what I've heard from some of the meetings and discussions, we may have some ideas to better secure the mall. So Mr. Carr, do you have something that you can fill us in on? And thank you for coming, by the way, we appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome, I'm sorry, I just kind of hurried up and ate dinner. Not used to these evenings. We did have a meeting last week at the mall property with a few of your folks, Chris Clark, Larry Dell- I'm going to kill his last name, Dell Vannery.
Yeah, you got it.
Mark Carlson and Chief Dumas. The meeting was more informational on my part to collect their observations, their feelings, and their suggestions for what we can do. We talked for about an hour, I thought it was a really good productive meeting. Michael Sternberg from our organization was also with me there. I got to admit, that's the first time I've been in Rutland, Vermont in 21 years. It's a lot different now than it was then. But we had a good talk, a good meeting, the guys brought a lot of good ideas. Since Thursday, I've had Michael, well, Michael and I spent a good deal of time last week before even the meeting going through the property and going around the property. We went exterior and interior. I identified places that we needed to stiffen, if you will, security-wise. Surprisingly, there were not that many places where people had gotten in, but nonetheless, people had gotten in. There was good news, nobody in the mall. I did not see any evidence of people living in the mall. Michael and I were trying to keep our eyes out for not just people living, but any drug use. I'm sure we all know, like needles laying around, we didn't see any of that. And that's good news, I'm not saying that we were happy, but we were at least encouraged that we didn't see any of the drug use. We, Michael has been there every day now, he has been checking the interior and the exterior of the mall. I kind of just wanted to give you where we're at right at the moment. Since our meeting, I've been exploring some of the options that were discussed on Thursday morning. Things like concrete barriers, things like additional lighting, things like signage, and some, and real live security versus security cameras. I'm trying to come up with what can be an effective mixture of some, if not all, of the ideas that were brought up. Okay, I've been pricing out some of the alternatives so that I can present them to my upper management and to ownership.
Okay, so I'd like to hear from Castleton University. Not sure whether President Spiro or Mr. Wolf.
Mary, this President Spiro, thank you so much for inviting us and thank you for all the board is doing to address this issue. I think I will step aside and let Steve Wolf, he's the director of the arena, share his perspective. And frankly, I'd like to hear his thoughts on what Ed just outlined. And then I'll step in if Steve wants to be, but Steve, as far as I'm concerned, the floor is yours.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you for inviting me today. Just, you know, this is my observations about, you know, the end of July, it got extremely bad around here. The woods behind us were, you know, were being filled with some homeless individuals. There was a lot of vandalism around the mall area. The roof is damaged pretty extensively, the skylights are smashed. You know, we did a lot of cleanup ourselves, just with fluorescent lights, things like that, that have been, that were dropped onto the, you know, that were thrown onto the pavement. You know, it's just, it got extremely bad for a period of time. We did see, we did have some individuals who did come through the arena. And honestly, they were pretty, in my opinion, pretty heavily into drugs that were, again, that were in the area. Over the last, pretty much over this last month, we've seen it decrease quite a bit as far as the foot traffic goes. It looks to me like there is still a lot of, you know, car traffic out there around the arena. But as far as the foot traffic goes and the homeless, that has decreased quite a bit. I know the police have been pretty much hourly monitoring the area. And that has, you know, helped quite a bit. But for the, like I said, for the most part, the last month, things have decreased this, you know, the frequency of some issues that have been happening around the arena and I believe around the mall. So other than that, you know, we would like to see some things go into place that would help reduce some of the, definitely, car traffic coming in and around here. I think that's where a lot of the problems are happening. I know there's some issues on the backside of the mall area, some of the businesses on South Main Street, where they're probably entering from, you know, driving into the mall and then going through the woods. But, you know, I think the more we can reduce the traffic flow now, the better off we would be.
Okay, so we had our fire chief and our, both of our assistant chiefs there, and we had our police chief. So let's start with, is the fire chief there? Yes, sorry. Chris Clark.
We talked about barricading off the-
Can you hear Chris okay?
No, no.
Okay, would you move up on camera, please? And actually, Ed, why don't you move up with him, please?
So when we talked with him last Thursday, we talked about putting barricades up at the south entrance to the mall at the intersection of Route 4, completely blocking that one off, so they can only use the entrance by Ponderosa. Also, we talked about putting a cement block over by Sears in the back of the mall, so they can't drive around the mall. They just, we just wanted to put one, just in case we had to get a fire truck around it. But it should slow the cars down, because the two hydrants for that complex up there are in front of Spartan Arena and in front of Kmart, so we didn't want to block those off.
Chief Dumas.
We did talk about the barricades by Sears, just to make it so it's like a dead end street. So Mr. Carr brought up a good point in that if people feel trapped, they won't be there so often, or at least not want to go up there and hang out. Another thing we talked about was posting a no trespass signs at the entrance, even if they have a time limit on it. You know, after sunset, not allowed up here. That had to do, we had to talk with the Spartan Arena, see what they wanted there also. But for general traffic, just coming up there to hang out, to get rid of that. I know this week I heard some reports, I know Mr. Carr talked to a gentleman that sleeps there, has a camper setup, and he asked him, and he told, well, there's no signs that say I don't have to be here, so he goes, well, I'm telling you, leave now. We had another, somebody else was up there teaching their kid how to drive or something, they were confronted also, so. It was pretty, like Mr. Carr says, a pretty productive meeting, and I know he's probably pushing numbers right now, see what he can do, as far as what's, it's not going to be cheap, I'm sure. But I was encouraged with what he had to say, and he was open to some suggestions from all of us.
Can I ask a question? Why wouldn't we just block it off from the right, as you go up this, the north exit? Or the entrance, north entrance, why wouldn't we just block that off? I understand, because you said the hydrants are at Kmart and at Spartan Arena, there's still access to those hydrants. So if we blocked off that right, as you came up that entrance, and along the, along right to the front door of Kmart, that would section off that whole area of the mall that is where I think there's, you know, there's problems in the back for sure. But with the graffiti and everything going along the front of the mall, that would section that off, you know, so cars couldn't get through there.
We discussed that, but the issue was for fire apparatus to get complete coverage all the way around the building, so we didn't want to cut it off completely. We did talk about cutting off, once you get up into the malls, cutting off that whole section, so you couldn't go to the south end of the mall. As you drive up, when you get to the mall entrance, where the Y is, and people go to the left towards the Spartan Arena, for the right, we were going to cut that off completely, right there. At least deter people, then they have a spot for trucks to go through if they need to. And that's why we want to put a barricade across the back, so then they're stuck there. They have to come back to this one area in order to leave. Now it'd make it easy for us or security, if they hire somebody to better control who has access up there.
I think Mr. Wolf was looking over my notes of where we were thinking of laying it out, and I know you can't see them. But Steve, my notes have, as you come up the north entrance, we would block off access to the right. And then every island in the parking area, as you get up towards Kmart, we could do that all the way up to a long island and leave an opening for the fire department and for the police department to get through and for Michael to get through. And again, what Chris said is putting another barrier down in the back behind Sears. If anybody goes in there, they're pretty much trapped, they can't get out. And we're not trying to trap people as much as make it less accessible and less inviting from a traffic flow perspective, okay?
Could we put something in place that is easier to move, other than a Jersey barrier? You know, as the access in and out of there? If, you know, still have something to block it, but easier for the fire department to move or the police department to move?
We didn't discuss that, I don't know, I'm not a concrete barrier guy. I'm not sure what options are available. I can tell you from some of my experience, we try, we have tried in other places to put chains with signs on them, do not enter. They barely last a couple nights. Where people want to get through and they can, they'll try to get through. That's not saying we can't try anything, but I haven't been able, we did the chains barriers in Vallejo, California, primarily at the request of the fire department. It still didn't work. But we're open to it, we're open to that idea.
So I'm going to open, I'm going to open up now for questions from the Select Board, and I think Don has a question or comment?
No, no, I just, I had a suggestion, and I know this barricade situation is, it's a difficult one, because we want to allow, we want to allow emergency vehicles in, if need be, for, you know, for obvious reasons. But on that north entrance, it would seem to me that it would be productive to take Jersey barriers and block off entrance road at so many feet, and then alternate and put another Jersey barrier on the exit lane, because we don't need two-way traffic in that mall. We don't have a situation where we've got, we've got to worry about traffic control. But we certainly have to worry about speed control for people that don't need to be there. And if they have to alternate, they're going to have to slow down considerably to negotiate alternating Jersey barriers. And then the only requirement would be that the Jersey barriers would have to be put at a distance that was enough so that emergency vehicles could negotiate them. But they know they're there, they can do an S-turn and go up through and get through. But somebody trying to leave that mall in a hurry for nefarious reasons would pretty much not be able to do so if you did alternating Jersey barriers.
I don't think we were into traffic control, as far as slowing traffic down, because Mr. Wolf has a Spartan Arena up there and they still need access up there. And at times, they'll have, you know, several hundred cars parked up there for their functions at the Spartan Arena. So speed wasn't really the issue we were looking at, we're looking at blocking access or limiting access or restricting it somewhat to the whole south end of the mall and out behind, that's our main concern. But we wanted the fire department to have access to the barricades, we weren't into, I mean, slowing traffic down. I don't think that's a real big issue, coming in and out of one entrance of the mall.
So would it be permissible to completely close off one of those entrances to the mall? I mean, you've got enough room up in the back to turn fire apparatus around, actually, and use the entrance as an exit as well.
We talked about that, that was, we suggested they just block off the south entrance to the mall completely. Chris mentioned that already, that was one of the first things we talked about. Actually, Mr. Carr asked if we were opposed to that, and I said, I said, I'm not.
Okay, and the only, the other question I had really was more for clarification for anybody that's listening, for the general public, and for myself, because I don't actually know. What is the ownership arrangement of the Spartan Arena? Property-wise, land-wise, building-wise, and so forth? I think people really need to know who owns what, who's responsible for what. And that would be helpful if we got that, Mr. President.
Thank you, yes, I know that is confusing, and I perhaps should have said that at the beginning, so thank you for asking. Caston University owns the arena, which is separate from, but right next to the mall itself. And so when people talk about the mall that is different from the arena, it's just that we strive to be, and I think that we are, a really good neighbor. We know how important the mall and the arena is to Rutland Town and to Rutland City and to all the surrounding towns. I mean, it's a great public asset with hockey and junior hockey and public skating, and we have a workout gym that the public uses all the time, and sports camps and Rutland High Graduation and so forth. And so we feel that our success is Rutland Town's success. And that's why we are partnering with this board, even though technically we own the arena and Zemias owns the mall. Oh, I didn't answer your question, who owns the land, I honestly don't know. Steve, we own the building, do we own the land as well?
Zemias owns the land.
Zemias owns the land, thank you for clarifying that.
I thought.
Okay. JP, did you have any questions or comments?
I'd like to have a schedule of what's going to be done when this is dragged down too long.
Mr. Carr, the schedule.
The schedule, can you be more specific?
Well, I'd like- I'd like a window of when you're going to complete these measures, so we don't have to keep dealing with this. What are you looking at for a timeline?
The security measures?
Right.
Oh, I've asked my management to be able to come back to you guys within two to three weeks of what we're planning to do.
And we make it two, because that's our meeting schedule.
I can push for that, when is your next meeting?
It is the 14th, September 14th.
14th, certainly.
You need to, you need to figure out a way to get this on your front burner. You recognize you're in violation of the Act 250 permit, don't you?
I did not until it was mentioned a few minutes ago.
All right, well, now you know that you're in violation of the Act 250 permit, so you tell your powers-to-be that we're serious about getting this done and getting it done soon. There's no reason for both of us to be paying a lot of lawyers when you can just get your act together and implement some changes quicker, you know, you can get back to us in two weeks, I would think.
Okay, I would certainly push for that, JP.
Okay, Sharon Russell.
Yeah, I have a question for you, you know, I have to tell you, I spent, I ran the local homeless shelter and soup kitchen and have dealt with the homeless for over 40 years. I'm not sure if any of you realize, most homeless don't have cars. And most homeless, if they're there, they're there to sleep. People that break into a mall that has no security are criminals. And part of those criminals are you, the owners of the mall, that don't pony up to your responsibility to take care of that mall? It's not fair to the people that are going up there, it's not fair to the people of Rutland Town, and it's not fair to our police. And, you know, I can sit here and listen to it, my grandfather in Italian would call it bull you-know-what. But, you know, I've heard these things time and time again. My thing to you is, you know, it's time to do something, I agree with John Paul. This is getting ridiculous, people are getting hurt up there. And you don't find drug paraphernalia, well, good, somebody picked it up. But there's been plenty up there, I went up and walked one day, I saw plenty of it. And my contacts are the homeless of Rutland, Vermont, and their surrounding area. They tell me what goes on in that mall. So I'm sorry you think there hasn't been that many break-ins, there's been plenty. So I, for one, on this board, am sick of the excuses. My thing to you is, you have a responsibility, time to live up to it.
Mr. Carr, I realize that you're the consultant brought in on this, and I am disappointed that Mr. Sternberg and Mr., is it Alexander, are not here participating in this discussion? Because they're really the folks that we had hoped would be involved. But thank you for your time, and I would say there's a couple of things that I would point out. There's the static things that we've talked about, like the barriers and, you know, securing doors and all of that. But then there's the ongoing patrolling and security. And the Act 250 permit requires that you provide security people with ticketing authority to be up and around the mall on, I think it was eight hours a day, 24, it was a very extensive time. I'd have to look at the Act 250 permit. But that has not been amended and that remains in effect. So we, and to continue relying on the town, we will probably be sending BAI an invoice for the two years' worth of security that we've done, because that wasn't, that's over and above what the town should have done. But you need to figure out something so security is brought in on a regular basis and not Mr. Sternberg coming over maybe once a day or once a week or whatever he has been doing. The bill so far that you will see, or your principals will see, is $2,520. And that's, we cannot afford, we're down a police officer on our police department, we cannot afford to be your private security service, we just can't do it. We have too many other areas in town that need our attention. So we will look for your plan in two weeks to do the static security. But we also want to see a component of that that talks about what you are going to have to comply with the Act 250 permit. So there is security on, you know, patrol or on foot or- on patrol or on foot or however you do it for securing the mall and patrolling up there because we can't do it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
To add to what you said, in looking at that information that you so graciously provided us the research on that, that 250, I do believe, requires arresting authority. And arresting authority is not your typical security guard. That means it's law enforcement security, which would mean the sheriff's department or, you know, hiring someone that has enforcement authority. We need to have some people up there that have the ability to do some arrests. Because when that gets in the Rutland Herald, then maybe, just maybe, the word will get out that you don't go up there and do nefarious things. Or you're going to be in jail, or you're going to be fined, and you're going to be arrested. That's what we need. And that's what was intended when the 250 provisions were put in there. And I know because I was part of the board when those were established. And that was the intent. So it's always nice when you cite these things to go back to the legislative body and what their intent was. And our intent was that there be armed security provided at that mall.
So Bill Sweet can provide you with cop, relevant portions of the Act 250 permit to save you a little bit of research if that would be helpful to you.
Yes, it would. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other folks? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Bill has all my contact information.
Okay. So any other folks from the town who wish to address this issue? Okay. So thank you again, Mr. Carr, for coming. We understand that you're the messenger and we hope that you will we didn't rough you up too much, but please do convey our very deep concern that this is something.
That you can be assured of, I will.
Thank you.
We're waiting on Ida here.
Yes, right.
We're supposed to get it before midnight, so.
Well, I hope you all stay safe. I hope it's all okay.
Thank you very much. It was good to meet all you. Ed and Chris, good to see you again.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks, we hope.
That's my goal. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
President Spiro and Mr. Wolf, thank you very much for your participation. And we'll probably see you in a couple of weeks. Jonathan, I'll see you Thursday morning.
Oh, that's correct. I'll see you Thursday morning. But thank you sincerely. We really appreciate a timeline and a request for both static security and law enforcement as well. So we, I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
You're very welcome. Okay, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mary.
Okay.
Stay here.
Yeah, we could probably. Yeah, you can stay too. That's right. Since the two of you are at the top of the list, Ed Dumas, town police chief.
First, I would like to introduce our new officer, Angie Shermerhorn, who comes with experience in the, I know I'm going to get it wrong.
Got it right.
Yeah, old term is welfare department. She did investigations there for them. Am I correct? Well, you did investigations of the welfare in the state. And she has wanted to be an SRO for a course of months. She started her career in law enforcement in New York, I believe it was initially. Wasn't it, New Yorkers? Oh, really? Okay, so new people in New York that were in law enforcement, but also started here in Pittsburgh part-time with Pittsburgh PD. And showed interest the last time we hired an SRO. We kept her name on a list. Our other SRO left and Angie was willing to take on the responsibility and we're glad to have her. So there she is right there.
So welcome, Angie, and thank you for doing this school resource officer work. I've heard very good things about you up there. And of course, I've seen you down on Creek Row, which, and I understand from the police log here, you ticketed someone. So watch out, folks on Creek Road and other roads in town. I think you've been a presence all over. Oh, Mr. Rowe has something to say. Did you catch Mr. Rowe?
Yes, he has been seamlessly at ours. And so it's been a pleasure in the short time that she's been there. And then obviously the summer kicked in, so it'll be really good for her and what she's doing with the kids once school gets started tomorrow. So she's done a really nice job, fit in really well. So we expect
Great. Thank you. I understand she's reading books to some of the younger students. Are you reading books to students? Are you reading to them? Very good. Good. Yeah. Thank you.
We scheduled for DARE training also to be a DARE instructor.
Okay, good. What is DARE, so people know? Uh-oh.
Drug resistance, drug awareness.
It has to do with drug awareness, yeah.
Drug awareness and children learning how to do it, all that good stuff. I've never been a DARE officer.
I could sort of tell.
Yeah.
As one of his teachers in another era, I could tell you all of the things that he would teach kids not to do.
Thank you, JP.
So, so the, I think we had 54 calls for requests for service. I should note that anytime we do a motor vehicle stunt now, it's a call for service, a directed patrol. It's just a new system. We have ValCor. That's how we record everything now. They give you a call number. Also, we had some really good luck with the town website and solving some not major crimes. We did find, we did catch one, we did identify one person at Hannahford's who stole an elderly woman's purse. We will identify him. We're looking to cite that person at this point in time. And we saw the neighborhood troubling thing that has happened in the town. And we were able to get a call, a confession within two hours of putting it on the website. So it's been a big help to us. So we thank all the people out there and look at the town website and recognize people and let us know. It's great. It's it's a good tool. I hope to use it more in the future.
Good. Thank you very much. While you're here, we have received a request for a liquor license renewal. This is for a half year. It is for beginning May 1st, 2021, ending April, well, that looks like a full year. April 30th, 2022. So I'm not sure why it says half year.
Why? Because they're getting it now?
Oh, right, because we're halfway through the year, kind of, sort of. All right. This is for East Restaurant LLC, doing business as East Restaurant. It's 283 Route 4.
By the Home Depot?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we have any problems. We're good to go.
Okay, so, let's see. It looks like if this is approved, all of us need to sign. If we disapprove, all of us need to sign in a different place. So I will, anyone wish to make a motion to renew the license for?
So move.
Motion is made?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. JP, are you there?
I am.
Okay, any noes?
Aye.
Is that a no or?
You called for noes and I said aye to no.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So that's three in favor, one no. There is a blank for disapproval as well, so. Okay. Any questions or further comments concerning our town police chief? Thank you for touring up around the mall. And you should sit there with Chris and keep him company.
Okay, well.
All right, yes. Is, okay.
I noticed it this evening when I was drilling and it happens quite a bit on my end near Post Road is there's a couple of motorcycles there and it sounds like they're doing a million miles an hour, but I know they're doing over the 35.
Okay.
They're really winding it up.
Okay.
Somebody's going to get hurt.
All right.
Same time about every day?
Anytime, could be dark, could be during daylight, morning. Whenever they happen to be on it, they wind it up. Most of the times they go by.
Okay.
I think Angie's making notes too mentally. Okay, thank you. Town Fire Chief, Chris Clark.
I don't really have too much. It's been a slow couple of weeks. We had four calls in the last two weeks. Pump testing that I told you two weeks ago got canceled, so we're going to be doing that this Sunday. And I've had quite a few calls on our retired engine three for sale. So one guy's really interested. He offered to give me a deposit today. He's in Maryland, so we got to mail it, but I'm waiting to hear back.
The engine or the check?
I'm waiting for the check. But he wants to come see it first, so. But I took a million pictures and sent them. So he's seen the whole thing. He just wants to come up and take a peek. So hopefully that will be gone within a couple of weeks.
Sale price?
$10,000.
Okay, any questions for our fire chief? If not, thank you. And thanks also for, with your, I have to stop and think, assistant chiefs for touring up around the mall and giving good input and advice. So hopefully you'll all be back in two weeks and we'll see where we're going with this. Appreciate your help. Thank you. I skipped over the part and I shouldn't have done, but is there any member of the public who is not already included on the agenda who would like to say something? Okay. We will just, this is a quick preview. We're going to have seven o'clock. We're going to be on the line with our town attorney. I believe that's an executive session. And we will be hearing from our lister, Howard Burgess, later with a, that's town business related to a tax matter, and that won't be an executive session. So we'll have that all.
What would be the reason for the executive session? Is there a specific subject or is it just discussions with our attorney?
It will be pending litigation.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, moving right along. Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer. And I know she was going to be calling in from home because her youngsters are headed back to school tomorrow.
Good evening. I don't really, hi, I really don't have anything for this evening. Nothing, any difference that I have been talking about for the last couple of weeks, just reminders of taxes. And you have the orders. The extra payroll order is in there, if you notice, from the committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. So just check that out and look that over. I am going to be sending an email to the board regarding that matter. So just be on the lookout for that. But other than that, I do not have anything else.
Okay, any questions for our town clerk and treasurer? Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Mike Rowe, town recreation director.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Hi, Mike. Good, thanks.
Carrie, Bill and I are going to put an envelope in your office with lots of money. Okay.
Hope it's addressed to me personally.
It is. It's okay. No, I'm just kidding. So a couple of things. The pool is all closed up, covered, and ready for winter diploma. We'll come in the next couple of weeks to shut the water off. It was a so-so season, a lot of rain. But we made it through. A big thank you to Allen Pools and Spa for our fixing the motor, which is on your, which was in the orders to be paid out of depreciation. It was a lot less than I thought. But they were great. They had it over to, I don't know who did. I think it was Turner's, and to thank to them for the quick turnaround. We were only down for two days. So that was great. And everything was running perfectly when we shut down the other day. So big thanks to them to help us get up and keep running. Trying to think. Other than that, fall sports are starting. Everything's going ahead as we would normally do. People are signing up. So we have a lot of people that are going to participate in our football and soccer programs for the fall. And other than that, the next question would be, which we can have later, but I do need to start planning for is if we are thinking of the Halloween party in a different format potentially. I was thinking worst case, maybe we just, they can drive by the school and we can give them a bag. I don't know of stuff or something, but I don't want to wait too long. So I do like a decision at some point in the next couple of weeks. Be that the next meeting or the one after, because there's a lot of planning that goes involved. And I'm okay with whatever you decide. I just want you to know that that's coming up real quick. As you all know now, we are into September. And it's going to go by really quickly here.
Yes, it will. Bill, could you add to the agenda for next meeting, the Halloween party format, please? That'll remind us that it's there.
And then just a discussion on what people think. And obviously JP will weigh heavily on what JP feels is appropriate. But at least we can start that conversation to know if we're going up or down or what we can potentially do.
Should we include the school board? Because that's, I mean.
We can. They just allow us to use the gym. So I can ask. I don't know if it needs to be. I just usually go in and sign out the gym. We had that discussion at school today as far as, you know, external people coming in after school. And there's really no big restrictions in that regard. Just you have to wear a mask inside for the kids. And then depending on what they want, I think we'd be able to pull that out. But I will communicate with them and get their vibe too. Because if they say no, then obviously we'll have to think something else.
I had a similar kind of inquiry from Jim Hall and the Rutland Town seniors, just trying to figure out, do we do the Christmas party over at the fire station? Do we get another facility somewhere that's bigger? Or what do we do with it?
Put it right downstairs.
Okay.
I think there's plenty of room downstairs. We'll have it catered. Jim and I have already planned the cater and he already has the date. I think it's December 7th, off the top of my head. And we thought of doing it here. I don't think there's any logistical reason why we can't. I think it's big enough to hold the seniors for that. Obviously, it needs to work and maybe we could boost it up a little bit. But I think that was our our plan. But we'll have to obviously wait and see how things unfold.
Yes.
But there is a date. And then we'll go forward from there.
Okay. Questions from the select board members?
Any follow-up, Mike, on those other two motors?
No, I'll get there. I just, it's been kind of a whirlwind. And I did have the guy, the guy that came to fix my pool. He came over to Northwood and his stuff doesn't really work through gunite. But he did pull out his stuff to see if he could find some leaks, but he couldn't really tell. He even said upfront, it's probably not going to work for his detection system that he had. But he was kind and came over and gave it the old college try, I guess. And so we're okay with that. We'll figure that out.
Sharon?
No, I just, if you need to decorate for that, for the Christmas, the senior Christmas thing.
Yeah. I think we could do something really nice. And, you know, if we can have the band that we've had from school, whether we move some stuff on the stage, I don't know the status of the stage, if it's packed with stuff or not. I'm not sure.
There's some stuff up there.
There's some, anyway. We did talk about.
Would it take a lot to move it, Bill?
People.
We did talk about having it here, though.
Okay.
As far as, because it's big enough to.
Okay.
And it's catered and there's that spot they can put the stuff.
But if you want somebody to decorate, give me a show.
Thank you very much.
You might just join in.
Yeah, there you are. Yeah, we can do that.
We can do that. All right.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Byron Hathaway, town road commissioner. Byron Hathaway, town road commissioner.
Good evening.
Good evening. We continue to work diligently at some final cleanup involved with paving. McKinley Avenue is almost done. Another couple of days there, we'll have that taken care of. And that just leaves us the middle road and that will take very long down there. Gleason Road is open as of yesterday. It was paved today. It was closed just temporarily for paving. So that is, project is completed and done. I assume next, the next board meeting, you'll have the invoice from the contractor for that.
Yeah.
The school is all done. We did get the, on Friday, the broken grate that was out in the middle of the parking lot, that new grate finally came in and we replaced that and took the cone out of the middle of the parking lot, so that's looks normal now.
Just in time.
And the grass is starting to grow, so things will heal up and look a little nicer there after a while. Roadside mowing. Walt's all done on the northeast section of town. He started on, on the center alt side, which should put him down on Creek Road, I would think, by Friday. And then that would just leave Coal River Road and a few spot places in the Killington Avenue area for the first of the week. We're coming along good there. And for your next packet, I received the last grant agreement. It's for next year's grants and aid money. It's twelve thousand dollars. The projects for that will be identified later this fall when we do our road erosion inventory.
Okay.
So that will be in your packet next time. I believe the last set of orders two weeks ago, I wasn't able to be here. You withheld back a little over twelve thousand dollars from the paving contractor. Just wanted you to know that I added a street to that because it did fall within the six hundred thousand dollar budget that we had, so the total project did come to that five eighty-four or something or other.
Okay. So.
I don't know if that's in your orders for this time. I certainly hope it is.
I'll take a quick look.
No, it's not this time, Mary.
It would have been had we known.
Okay, so it's not in the orders, so is there, we can do it by motion.
Right.
Is there a motion to pay?
So moved.
Crosman and Heather. Crosman, Crosman Drive and Heather Lane.
Okay. Alright. And you're satisfied that that was, you know, that part of the project was done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all done and all cleaned up.
Twelve five oh two. Okay. It's off by two bucks. What the heck?
So I make the motion that we paid twelve thousand five oh two. As the two streets were added.
Okay, motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
I think JP just seconded.
Was JP seconded? Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries and we'll, Carrie, if you could add that or cut a check so that we catch up with the paving contractor, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Will do.
Okay, anything else?
Anything else or any other questions?
Yeah, how you doing on getting your paperwork over to town office, Byron?
When I get a minute to sit down and actually do that, I've tried a couple of different times, but at that particular moment when I tried, the internet connection wasn't sufficient to make it happen. Some, sometimes during the day it's great, sometimes during the day it's not, but I think that's gonna change here pretty soon in the future because consolidated is, is out there stringing fiber optic cables everywhere and one of them is going right by Northwood Park, so I think our internet connection up there sometime in the next few weeks will probably get put together and we'll probably take a big step up and that should cure the issue.
What about the physical files? Have you started moving them to the town office yet?
There's quite a few of them that already moved into the town office, yes.
Yeah, well, the ones that you have left at the garage, have you started moving them into the town office?
I didn't quite understand you, JP.
The ones that are at the town garage, have you started moving them to the town office?
Yeah, there's quite a few of them that have already been moved over. There's just some updates, grant agreements and that sort of thing that need to be added to some of the projects that are listed there.
So what kind of records?
What's that?
What kind of records are left at the garage?
I just, just said there are some grant agreements and that sort of thing that need to be updated to the project lists.
What about the contracts with the snowplowers? Are they at the garage?
We've never had written contracts with any of our snowplowers. I don't have anything in that line. Huh?
You don't have any written, you don't have any written contracts at the garage with the snowplowers?
No, we've never had written contracts with any of our snowplowers.
Oh, yeah, we had. The last time I was on the board, we did. There's insurance requirements that were reduced to writing?
Yeah, I remember that. So what do we have, what do we have for that? Because I remember the same thing. We had, and then the, the payment schedules and all of that, so if it wasn't a writ, yeah, I'm remembering the same thing, JP.
There was a written contract. I saw it.
Okay.
And, and, and it was supposed to be at the town garage. You saying those contract, there's no contracts at the town garage?
If I have them, they're up there. I will look.
What do you mean? If, if you have them, you just told me there weren't any. Are there contracts or aren't there?
To my knowledge, I don't believe there are any written contracts, JP, but I will look to be sure. And if I have them, I will make copies of them and bring them into your office.
Yeah, no, we want the originals at the town office. You can keep copies if you want for the garage office.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments for the road commissioner? Okay, thank you for getting down on Creek Road for the contractor who was doing the underground fiber optic and he stopped short of my house, but, you know.
He'll be there a couple, he's got two more days. I met with him this morning. I got his thousand dollar bond check and his hundred dollar permit fee.
Okay.
And he should be, he's got done in two more days. He just gotta go to that next pole and the fiber optic comes out of the ground there and then goes overhead from that point, from that point.
So maybe I will get fiber optic.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
The Walt is doing all the, the mowing, right?
Correct.
I just, I just wanted to compliment him on McKinley because, you know, that, that new machine, the way that thing works, he's a, he's a pretty skilled operator and.
That's why I have Walt in the tractor.
Oh, man, you know, and the thing is, there's a lot of overhanging trees that, that really, you know, they do block visibility on traffic because it doesn't take long for them to crown in, you know that. He's been able to get at them with that and he did an excellent job up on McKinley. Just wanted to let you know, so you can let him know.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Byron. Barbara Noyes-Pulling, town planning commission chair. Good evening.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. Just a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. Thomas Derry, one of the members of the family, Krista Thomas, has been in the town office a couple of times because it looks like their efforts to sell most of their parcel in one sale to a food or agricultural kind of center type business, that hasn't gone anywhere, so they are now looking at subdivisions and they've been, they're going through, sorting through some old home deeds right now and trying to figure out what they've had for subdivisions and boundary line adjustments and just trying to get all that straight, but it looks like they're going to come to our next planning commission meeting on September sixteenth to kind of tell us a little bit about what they have in mind and it looks like it might be subdivisions on the west side of Route Seven, opposite, you know, most of the dairy operations there. And that is, for a land use perspective, that is working lands, but, but, you know, for ag and forestry, but housing is allowed in that, but it would be preferential that it was still stay agricultural and open land. So that's coming up. The other thing is that we might have had our first complaint, our stormwater ordinance complaint. This is up on Hitsel Terrace and before the complaint gets filed, I've asked the person, and this is Annie McVane, there's been some ongoing issues up there with Phil being brought in and maybe a stream, a culvert put in without a permit. So I asked that we check with the state about whether they did grant a permit first and know anything about the situation, so I'm waiting to hear about that. Otherwise, it might come back to the administrative assistant, who is Bill, and the stormwater commission, which is the planning commission, our alter ego, if you will, and we might have to decide whether we need to get a permit together on that or if there's been illegal discharges or anything like that, so that's something we'll have, I'll have more information on in two weeks for you.
Okay, thank you. So you get to actually use the stormwater commission, maybe?
Yeah, I'll have to remember to like, you know, adjourn the planning commission and convene the stormwater commission and all that, but we'll get the hang of it.
Any questions from select board members for the planning commission? If not, thanks very much, Barbara. Appreciate it. And in answer to your email, yes, I could use some guidance and either you or Bill so that I can request the second installment of our Pocket Park grant to pay the invoice that's been presented. Well, actually, here's the question. If you, because the select board hasn't seen that, so if we could reduce to writing what the request is and then we'll put it in next, in the packet for two weeks from now, then the select board can see that we're drawing on the grant and how much and approve it before, you know, before it's submitted online by me. Okay?
So that we'll have to wait for two weeks?
Yeah, I think so.
The deadline was today.
To, well, does that mean we lose the money or?
It, it could.
Alright, so why don't you take a minute and explain what this is? This was the grant for the Pocket Park that's being administered by the regional planning commission to pay for percentages of work done, so if you, I don't have it, I don't have my laptop here, so if you could take a minute and explain to the select board what it is that we're seeking.
Sure. This, this comes from the town to request the funding because the funding goes to the town and then you pay the, the regional planning commission. So this would be the second request for funding and it's all, all set up on, on their calendar when these requests are made and, and when they'll process them. So, and, and this particular one, it is the request for funds and there is a report that goes along with that and, and that report entails pretty much what, what I've been doing through the regional planning commission to plan for the park, all the things, all the meetings, the survey work that we've put out there and paid, and will be paying for. So that, that was like a halfway point report, progress report. So, so both of those were to be combined and, and submitted at the end of August.
Okay, so the amount being requested is, is, well, the total grant was fifteen thousand. The amount you're requesting is half of that?
No. Bill or Carrie, do you know what the amount is this time around? I guess not. It, it should be in that online system.
Barbara, this is, Barbara, this is Carrie. So the rule of thumb usually is, I mean, we pay what we're asked to disperse out, but every department head kind of keeps track of what they have spent or what needs to be spent. So no, I, I don't have the program in front of me, so I don't know anything about that. You would have to have that in front of you.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to do that. The, this part of the, the grant, the financial part, since the money goes through the town, it's very limited to who has access to that, because I think Carrie has found out.
Bill is still looking, so I'm not sure he's finding it. Yeah, so I don't think we can do this tonight, Barbara. Sorry. So can you pull some actual numbers together so we can tackle it at our next meeting?
Isn't that too late?
Well, we're gonna have to, yeah.
It likely will be too late, but I'll see if I can get some kind of an extension.
What did we already pay for?
It, it's not, you're, you're, it's not paying for anything. You're getting paid from, from the state. And I think it's, I think it's off the top of my head, I think it's thirty percent this time around.
Thirty percent of the fifteen thousand dollar grant?
Yeah, but don't quote me on that, please.
But if we're getting paid, why do we have to do anything?
Because we have to submit the invoice online. I think that's what it is to be reimbursed. Is that right?
Yeah, this, you have to go to the portal and you're.
I'm, and I've done it once, so I'm fuzzy on it, but yeah. So in that case, since we're being paid, we don't need select board authorization, right? That's an open question.
We're requesting funds, not paying funds.
Alright. Okay, so I think we just solved the problem. Maybe I can sit with Bill for a few minutes tonight after this meeting, so we submit it on time. It's due today? Okay.
So we need to request thirty percent of the fifteen thousand?
Yeah, right, yeah. So no select board approval is necessary because it's.
Thirty-three and a third, that would be five thousand dollars. Why don't we just request five thousand?
Well, because we, I have to go on all.
Narrative stuff's going with it. It's not just that. It's a.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, well.
Alright. Alright.
If you're confused, you can imagine what the rest of us are.
I have no idea which.
So I guess, are you gonna be around for a bit? Oh, we're, we're beyond seven o'clock. You gonna be around for a bit after the meeting, Barbara?
I can be.
Okay, thanks. So I'll huddle with Bill in his office and see if we can get something done so I can submit it this evening.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Okay, any further questions for Barbara Noyes-Pulling, our town planning commission chair? If not, thank you very much, Barbara, and we'll talk again later, I think. Alright. Is Kevin Brown on? Okay. So Kevin has asked to join us this evening. Kevin is our town attorney and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
So I'm old.
Question's made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we'll be in executive session. If session, no action taken as a result of executive session, so it is now seven twenty-nine and we're back in. Next item on the agenda is Bill Sweet, town administrative assistant.
Is it me or is it cold in here?
Well, that's why I wore an extra layer.
When you sit there, you get the remote control.
And it's the power and the glory.
That's right. Alright.
Okay.
Well, I haven't got the power or the glory, but it's cold.
Just a few things in the, in the. Just a few things in the, in the packet. The schedule and committee agenda items. We have information from VLCT on, a little information on, on their, from, from their, one of the newsletters about how towns can opt into retail cannabis. So JP had asked for that agenda item for this evening, and that's the information they had on it.
Okay.
Be in the, in the packet.
Oh, it's in the packet. Oh, right. B, there it is. Okay. All right. JP, this is also new business item number, letter B. JP, this went on, I think you wanted to start the discussion.
I did. I, I really, I really think that the town should get in front of this in terms of the benefit to the taxpayers that this type of authorization would provide. And there's been plenty of experience from our neighbors now down in Massachusetts, in Maine. We know that the retail establishments don't bring out the worst in everybody like everybody feared. But amazingly, in Massachusetts, the local municipality can get anywhere from 17 to 22% of the retail sales, 17 to 22%. And that could go a long way towards reducing the tax burden for the residents of this town. So I would make a motion that we ask Kevin to draft a proposal, a ballot question that would allow us to put this before the voters and have them make a decision as to whether or not they want to use this as a way of alleviating some of their tax burden.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, well, without commenting at all on the, on approval or disapproval, I certainly agree with you, JP, that we ought to let the citizens decide this. And I would, I would support allowing that to happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Question, if this, you know, sales that occur, and we have a 1% tax, why would we be getting more than 1%? What am I missing?
Because we're allowed.
It's the, there's a, there's a regulatory scheme, a taxing, selling scheme currently under consideration, as I understand it, that would allow for a municipal tax, a specialty item tax on products that contain the active ingredient for marijuana.
Okay, so it hasn't passed yet?
I'm not, I'm not sure what the status of it is, Mary. That's the way they did it in Massachusetts.
Okay. All right. So, and this would go on the March 2022 ballot? Okay. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries. So we'll ask Kevin to draft an item to be included in the ballot.
Okay. Letter C, we received a letter from Alco Renewable Energy. They are giving us notice that they are intending to commence operation of their facility. So that's the one off Windcrest Road, the solar facility. Sounds like they're ready to put one of them online. So it's just their notice to us that they are starting operation down there.
Okay. This is the one Byron, where we didn't have the road and now there's been some right of way that's granted, clearing it up? If you know.
Somebody found a document somewhere.
Okay.
One of their researchers that some of us missed, I guess somehow, but anyways, it is our road.
It is our road. So we maintain it? Okay. Oh, well, okay.
Marshall always maintained it. I always maintained it.
Okay. All right. Good enough. Thank you. What else?
All right. We have on the desk, we received this afternoon, a request for the use of the meeting room by the Chair of the Rutland Town Democratic Committee.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Abstaining from this discussion.
I think.
You are, you are also the applicant of this request, so.
I, I believe that both the Democrat and Republican parties should have the ability to have their meetings here.
Think they have in the past, so. Yeah.
And the libertarians as well.
And the libertarians, I'm sorry.
Can we put a contingency that they all, can we put a contingency that they all have to meet at the same time?
We, we did once, JP, and I had something that I had to run downstairs. Democrats met up here, Republicans were downstairs, and I had to get downstairs and talk to the Republicans for a minute. That was kind of fun.
Right. So I'm assuming we're, we're.
So do we need a motion on that, Bill?
I, we just usually just say it's fine. Yeah, yeah. Okay, a couple of other things I had, we received from the Regional Planning Commission, the Regional Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement. I have the copy of it in my office. It's been fully executed, so all the participating towns have signed on. And I have the, it's a large document, but I have it in my office. It lists all the towns, what they have available for everything that we, if we need it. This coming Thursday, we're having the lock work done here. We're gonna have the locks changed, so we have some, a new lock system. So any keys you have to offices currently will be no good by Thursday. I, I have copies. I made a request for copies to be made. So we'll have all those, so anybody that needs them can come see me. And I will have copies of locks, copies, keys for locks for you. The air purifiers are in and installed. They got here about four o'clock this afternoon. So they're off running and they're, they're in all the offices. And I think, I think there probably was a, in the orders for the, for that reimbursement or for the text, yeah. All right, so they're all set. The tax rate verification you'd asked about, we've made the request to this tax department. They can't call them. It's only email and they've not responded. So we're still waiting to, we're trying to make another request about making sure the tax rate is correct.
Oh, from Harbor Freight?
Well, what, what we, what I requested was a list of all the town businesses that they have on file to make sure that their list matches what we know to be true and see if there's any others also. But Harbor Freight's also pushed back about four weeks for opening. So it was supposed to be this week, but it's, they've, their signs now say end of September or end of, yeah, end of December now, so. So, but we'll, we'll keep trying to get the list and.
I gotta tell you, every time I use a local business, I double check and make sure our, our 1% is there.
Well, that's why I was saying, you know, it's nice to, it's nice to ask the state. But I mean, the way things are going up there right now, you know, you may not get an answer back before they open. Why can't we just call them or call their management and?
They may not know. I mean, we can try, but they may not know. I mean, they may not know that, they may not know the difference. Because usually the store manager doesn't have anything to do with, anything to do with programming that into the computer. That's their home office that does, that does all that for them. So the local stores don't, don't generally have control over that.
Well, when we complained about a local business that you and I had each year separately.
Yeah.
It was a, and we complained locally.
It went through to the tax department, yeah. Well, I told them and then I went to the tax department. They, they got it changed. So, yeah.
Good.
So we'll, we'll keep trying.
Well, okay, just keep on it. That's all.
But we're, we're, we're using the, the avenue available to us at the moment, so. And on, on something Byron touched on earlier about the fiber optic line. So we had another annoying issue with Comcast and some, some, just some billing lining up. And so while I was on the phone with them trying to get that straightened out, I sent an email to our consolidated rep who we have accounts with for Northwood Park. And the fiber optic service is going to kind of go on all at once around town, is supposed to be fourth quarter this year. So it's, we're still a couple, a couple of months away, but not, not too far. So I'm gonna be meeting with them Thursday morning to discuss shifting everybody to one internet service for the entire town. This could get us a much better rate and a better service and, and hopefully a better experience. So it would allow us to do some other interesting things in the background as well, if we, if we do this all at once. So, so I'm meeting with our, our rep Thursday to talk about that. I've given her all the addresses for all the buildings and they're putting together a proposal for us and so we'll know more soon.
What's unique about Consolidated is you're gonna get dedicated fiber optic.
Yes. That's, that's what we're talking about, is one that will be dedicated to us that connects every town building.
My internet speed, that couldn't be available in front of my house. And it's like a thousand megabytes.
What I have now. Yeah, it's good. So, yeah.
Because I'm so close to the.
Right.
Yeah, the box.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So she's putting together. Right, right. You don't, you don't, it doesn't, doesn't change depending upon the amount of usage for your, for your neighbor. So this would connect, what we're looking at is, I said, you know, the, the main buildings are like the highway garage, the pool, the town hall, and the two fire stations. Depending upon the, the cost, we have Dewey Field, the transfer station, and then, and the other storage building in Northwood Park. So since they're all in fairly close proximity, it shouldn't change a lot. But that would allow us to do some, like, some other things in the background that could be very helpful. So, so I'm meeting with them Thursday and we'll find out, but that could be a big, a big help for, because, because their, their speeds at the, you know, in Northwood Park are not good.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It would help. Be a big, big difference.
Okay.
And that's everything I have on my list.
Okay, so I had a couple of things in there, too. Let's start with the invoice I referenced when we were talking with the mall. As I noted, I went back in the minutes of our select board meetings when we were discussing the mall and security. We did submit an invoice to the mall and it was paid in December of 2019. Since then, I asked Bill to put together an invoice representing all of the calls that our police department has had to the mall in the rest of 2019 and in 2020 and 2021. And he did, and I think that's on your tables, available to you. And it was all added up and the total number of hours was 56 hours at $45 an hour for a total of $2,520. And I would like to know what you'd like to do. I'm looking potentially for a motion to send this invoice to BAI.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? JP?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries then. So Bill, if you'd send that off to them.
Turn it, get ready to go.
I think it will emphasize our message from this evening, too. Also, on the, another invoice matter, you'll recall that we had billed the state of Vermont, DCF, for calls that were made to the Holiday Inn. And we had, and if this, oh, yeah, we had submitted it June 7th, 2021. It has not been paid. And that was in the amount of $2,970. And what's your pleasure with this? Shall we resend and copy our state senators?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll, I'll make that as a motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we want to include the interest that's included on the bottom? Stipulated on the bottom.
American O'Kru interest?
One and a half percent per month will be added to all past due accounts. I think people are nodding, so yes, I think we should include the interest.
No problem.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And aye. Okay, motion carries. And there is a cover sheet here if you want to sign it. And then Bill can update the invoice to include the interest. Okay. I think that's the, this is the basis for that.
Yes, it is.
Okay, anything else on the desk? There's information about the League of Cities and Towns here. There is a annual business meeting, September 29th. And I think you've all gotten. I think we've all gotten information about signing up for the annual meeting or the town fair, so that information is there. Okay, did I have anything else? No, I guess not. Anything?
That's everything I have.
Any questions the select board might have for our town administrative assistant? All right. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
On to John Paul Fignan, Town Health Officer.
Yeah, so we're gonna need to convene as the Board of Health for my issues.
Okay. Since we don't have too much else, let's, other than, I will entertain a motion to move from select board into the Board of Health.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we're in the Board of Health.
Okay, so as you're probably all aware, this COVID has not left us. And we're finding out more and more information all along about its, how much stickier it is than the other forms of the virus. All of this leads me to have to make the recommendation as your health officer that the public be required to wear masks when they are in the town office building or any other confined office space. This, at this time, would not include the transfer station, but it would include all other municipal offices.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, commencing after tonight's meeting, JP?
Correct.
Okay, as of September 1st then? That would be tomorrow.
As of September, right, it'd be as of tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Who does this include?
Um, the question is whoever is in the building?
Correct. Now, if the staff are, we, we still have the petitions up. The staff can stay behind those six feet then, and stay six feet from each other. But the recommendations are that everybody mask up. I know that both of our folks in the clerk's office are responsible in that manner.
Okay, petitions are down, but I think they can go back up fairly easily.
Right. That way they don't have to have them.
Now, you're saying this regardless of vaccination status, JP?
Yes. What, what they're finding, Don, is that even those of us who are vaccinated can be carriers and not even know it.
Right.
I, I mean, I'm aware of situations in the town where the white, the both, both parties are vaccinated. The wife tests positive and the husband tests negative. I, I mean, there's just no explanation for it other than we gotta just do the best we can to protect our staff.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, I'm not in favor of it, so I'm not gonna vote for it, but that's, uh, I just, I, I don't, I don't happen to believe that it's applicable. I think we've been fed a lot of misinformation and I know JP's trying to be proactive and I know he's got a job to do, but he may believe it, but I don't, I don't believe it. I'm vaccinated. Uh, I was told that if I got vaccinated, we were mask free. Uh, we have people that are mask free here and not here, this state, and then not that state. This thing is a mess. It's a total mess. And, and, you know, I have issues with masking. I have, I have health issues with masking. I went through this with JP the first time. Uh, they can go through it again. No. We have, that's why I got this. You know, that's why I got this. There's my mask. Ain't that wonderful?
Well, you know what, Don? The only thing, the only thing that bothers me is I have grandchildren. And if I'm carrying that, that virus, and I give it to my un, unvaccinated grandchildren and one of them dies, that's on me.
I understand that, Sharon, and I, and I appreciate, everyone has their beliefs and their precautions. And I agree with you, and I have grandchildren too. They're not as young as yours. They're, you know, they're 21, 22, whatever. I'm not worried about that because the, because the, the incidence rate for children is so low. It's like one tenth of 1%.
One dead child. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, yeah, there's, there's a whole mess that, well, I don't want to get into it. It's, I understand, but I don't agree with it. I just, I, I think we're, you know, we're developing into a society that is so controlled by these I, I think we're, you know, we're developing into a society that is so controlled by these unproven, unsubstantiated, conflicting testimony, conflicting studies, uh, that we're just, we're losing freedoms by the minute. And I just not in favor of losing those freedoms. So.
That's, that's one way to characterize it, Don. The other way is to characterize it as doing your patriotic duty towards your community. Whether you believe in wearing a mask or not, it doesn't hurt you and there is a chance it may benefit. And I'll tell you something else. If you're a family whose child is experiencing COVID, the experience rating is a hundred percent.
Both of my grandchildren have had COVID. They had it for about four days and they were done. So, you know.
Then you ought to be ashamed of yourself for saying the things you're saying.
No, I'm not ashamed of myself because the fact of the matter is they have more immunity.
You have none.
They have immunity. And that study just came out that said that those people that have, and that was a, that was a validated study. That those people that had COVID have 13 times more immunity than people that are vaccinated. And that was a UK study. So, you know, who do you believe?
That's why your grandchildren had it twice, Don.
Didn't have it twice, did it once.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the health officer's recommendation, uh, for masking beginning September 1st, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed, nay.
Okay. Motion carries. Um, anything else from the health officer? And if not, we can come out. I'll entertain a motion to go back to the select board.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to go back to the select board business. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Um, let's see. Committee meeting updates. Bill has circulated a list of committees and items for each of you for the agenda and, uh, request to beginning, begin scheduling committee meetings. Uh, we've done a lot of work in committees. I don't mean begin to because we've actually done quite a bit. So let's keep that work coming. Uh, next, any, were there any committee meetings? I don't think there were in the past two weeks. Okay. Update on project list. Um, let's see. Uh, just quickly going through, we've got the town hall building improvements. So we've, uh, got the air filter system coming in. Um, I don't know. We had a, let's see. I don't think there's too much else there right now. But remembering two weeks ago, we had, we had done a lot on each of them. So, okay. Um, hopping down to board to discuss succession planning and storage of department records. I know JP had some questions for our road commissioner. Um, any other discussion at this time? Okay. Let's move that item. Let's keep it on the agenda because I think it's an important thing. So we'll, um, keep discussing that for the next meeting. Is there any other new business to be considered? If not, down under old business, is there any old business to be considered?
Well, under new business, we do have Howard.
Yeah, that's right. And that's an executive. No, that's not an executive session. You're right. It is not. So, um, that was a late request that came in, but let's take care of it. Howard, are you on? Here we go.
Evening.
Good evening, Howard. You have the floor.
Well, thank you. Uh, Rotten Housing Authority, I, I hope that you've all received the email that I sent and were able to see the comments that Kevin Brown had made about it, uh, regarding the pilot payments. The Rotten Housing Authority was looking for a tax break, uh, on their new, uh, establishment up on US Route 4 East. And they presented to us a pilot payment program. Um, they basically said, we're doing this in the city. We've got bit accounts in the city and this is the way it is. Well, we had our town attorney review it and it, it does not, uh, qualify. It, it's, it doesn't, they have no business doing that. And so we're to the point of, of notifying them. And there's been a number of emails back and forth, certainly to Carrie Clark from, from Kevin, uh, Loso and Kirsten Hathaway. Um, you know, my suggestion is we, we bring them up to full cost, print out, uh, a new tax bill. And with a memo, you know, send it back to them. Well, it's, uh, I don't think there's any, any more discussion about it. If they, we may have some opposition. I, I'm sure that they may come back with something, but they need to prove to us that they're eligible. And according to Kevin, they're not even, uh, Christie Wright, our district, uh, advisor for the listeners, uh, she, she doubted this as well. And, and I think we're, we're on the right track. So I, I just want to make sure that you're all aware of what's going on. I had a conversation with Kevin. I sent emails back and forth. And this is where we're at. I don't know if anybody has any.
So, so how, Howard, let us, let us be clear about it. I'll make a motion that you send them a new and up to date tax bill. Um, and proceed as you outlined.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, what, Howard, good. They've been in existence for this, for this full calendar year. So did they get a tax bill before? Because they've been here April 1st, right?
Right. Well, they, they had to pay the tax bill, the tax bills for last year. That's what they purchased the property. I don't know if it was in September or when it was, but they were responsible for those tax bills for last year. They wanted relief on those and we didn't give them any. So they, they're paid up to date up through last year. And now we've got the brand new tax bill. And they haven't paid anything on the real estate yet. They, they did pay, they had business personal property. They paid that tax bill, but they have not paid anything to do with this, uh, the real estate part.
Well, they're going to be due to pay taxes on this September date.
September 10th.
Yeah. So, but maybe we should give them the 30 day, uh, timelines for, for the first payment. I'm not sure how Carrie would want to handle that, but we're going to send a brand new bill out.
But if we give them.
What was their previous assessment?
One at a time, please. Sorry.
Well, I just want to finish up to, so I understand what we're discussing here. What was their previous assessment?
Well, I don't have the exact numbers here, but I don't have anything in front of me here with that, but they, they were getting a break of about basically almost 50% of their assessment. Uh, it was a formula that they presented to us, uh, showing how, you know, how they, they said it was to be done. Know that a year ago, the tax bill was around 12,000 and the, the value of that property has been increased because they made improvements to it and, and done a number of things. So certainly that tax bill is going to be, you know, higher this year. They were looking for paying something around a six to 7,000, uh, amount.
Howard, did they appeal? Did they appeal their assessment? Is that how it got in front of you?
Yes, they did. Yes.
Okay. So they, they instituted a, a formal appeal and it's at your level now. Is that, is that right?
Say that again. Yeah.
So they, they appealed, they grieved their taxes and now it's in front of you.
Well, well, actually they, they, they came in with a formula for us, assuming that we were going to, to go with a pilot program. They didn't, uh,
Well, okay. Hold up, hold up, Howard. Hold up. Because there's a formal process. There's a formal process that you have to use to get standing if you want to argue about your taxes. They would, they would have gotten some appraisal or assessment and then they would have so much, so many days to grieve that and say, we don't agree with this. We think it should be lower. Have they started that process?
Well, I'll tell you, well, yeah. Okay. So they came in and grieved and we sent them a result of agreements and we stated that, that, uh, the town attorney depended on the town attorney's approval of this. So, so they knew that the town attorney was reviewing it. And and so what they, what they were, uh, appealing, I guess I would say, is that they just want to make sure that they stayed on the pilot program. But, but they knew, again, we told them that the, it depended on the town attorney's, uh, review. And now.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know why, I don't know why you would say that to them without hearing from the lawyer first, but in any event, uh, we are where we are. I do think your, your instincts about sending them a new bill and giving them a new timeline probably makes sense.
I'm not sure that 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 is anything the select board controls though, is it?
No.
This is if there were.
No, I wouldn't think so. I, I, I wouldn't think so. But, but Howard, you should know that the board, um, at least I think a majority of the board would not support any kind of tax forgiveness for this property at all.
You know, and the, the interesting thing is when we were up at their opening and he was talking to us and he was asked if he was going to, if you remember JP, if he was.
Yeah, I asked him directly.
Yes, you did. Um, if he was going to ask for any.
They would not.
He said, oh, absolutely not. We will not be asking for any, any decrease in our taxes. So.
Okay. Just to be clear, the pilot payment in lieu of taxes is available to state owned property. And my reading of what Kevin sent us was since this is not a state owned property, it is not eligible for a pilot.
Right.
Um, so that, just to clear that part up. Um, and we, they haven't gone through the process to grieve from the listeners to the Board of Civil Authorities. So I don't think the select board has any authority over this right now.
No, I, I agree with you.
No, no, I agree with you. I, I, I think we all agree on that.
Okay.
Well, this whole discussion about the pilot program, where, where he is telling you that he's approved for this or he's approved for that, obviously he's not approved for the pilot program or we would have received some money from the state. The state's the one that pays the money under the pilot program. That comes out of the 30% that we send them for, from the 1% option tax money. That's where that comes from.
Yeah. He, he kept referring to the city of Rotten that they've had an agreement since the late 1950s and 1963. But like Kevin said, the, the city has a charter. He doesn't know.
We don't.
What the status is there, but they may as well be in trouble with the city when, before this is all said and done.
Well, Kevin can say.
What difference, what difference does it make to the town, what they do with the city?
Absolutely no bearing.
Nothing.
Right. Okay. Was there a motion which? Or I hope not.
I'll make a motion.
No, 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 no. I'm not sure that.
It's not in front of us. It's not in front of us.
Okay.
Just send them a bill for the maximum for the, for their appraised value, what you feel their.
We're not giving direction.
No.
No, we can't.
No, we're not.
Okay. All right. So thank you for the information. We'll treat it that way. Thank you for the information, Howard.
Thanks, Howard.
Yep. I have one, I have one more quick thing if I could.
Okay.
Another comment. We have a new road, uh, in town and we've got to come up with a name and maybe you are, some of you are, or all of you are aware of it. It's a Thistle Hill, uh, development apart from the East Pitts Road.
Okay.
There's the third dwelling that's going up. And therefore it now has to become a place. It's got to become ideally, but what we're hoping it'll become is Thistle, Thistle Hill Place. Uh, I've sent a request to the 911 folks in Montpelier. Uh, I haven't heard back. It's been about a week now, but, but the select board is the one that names these roads. And, and up at this particular location, there's a sign in the ground. It's been there for years and it says, uh, Thistle Hill Homesites. And so it seems appropriate that that would be, you know, a good name for naming that road, but it's, it's your call. It's what, what it, you want it to be.
Well, I have an innate fear of any road that you can't pronounce um, with too many H's and S's and whatever, but, um, I'll entertain a motion to, um, name that road if, if, if this, yeah.
If you can't say it three times in a row fast, it doesn't make the cut.
Go ahead, Don. You give it a try.
Well, I can't do it because I'm missing some of my teeth.
Well, there you have it.
So no Thistle Hill. This is shit.
Sharon just came up with another name, but perhaps we shouldn't use it.
No.
Don't put that in the paper, please.
Okay. So is this the appropriate time or do we wait until we hear back from, you know, the developer and, and have we accepted this as a town road? It is a town road. No.
No, no, it's not a town road, but it's got to, because it has, because it has three, will have three, uh, dwellings on it. It has to have its own designation.
Okay. So this is a request from the residents who live there? How does that work?
Well, no, when, when, when I saw the third home going in, I, I told them about it. Now, all the residents understand it and they support it. They're in agreement to the name. Uh, they, they like Thistle Hill. And it's the state of Vermont, of course, they, the 911 folks in Montpelier are careful to look around at surrounding areas to make sure that there's not a conflicting Thistle Hill name, uh, that can cause a problem. I haven't heard back from them. Uh, and I, I don't know how that's going to go, but I, I will sooner or later. But again, it's the call of the select board as to what, you know, what they want it.
The problem with that name. So it's a 911 call.
Yeah.
And somebody's trying to say that and has the same problem I just had.
Thistle Hill? It's a whole place?
Third house and fifth. Okay.
I don't have a problem.
Is there a motion? Good. Don's just made a motion.
I'll make a motion that we name this new road Thistle Hill Place.
Okay.
Which I just said without mispronouncing it.
Not withstanding the missing tooth. Um, and is there a second to the motion?
I just have a problem with, yeah. I, I just think on a 911 call, if there's an emergency, somebody's trying to say it quick and they stumble because of trying to get, I, I don't know. I mean, what's your take JP?
Yeah. I can't say it three times in a row fast.
Me neither.
On the other hand, this is what people are used to calling it, I think.
On the other hand, if we don't name it tonight and there is a 911 call, it won't go to where it's supposed to go and somebody will be in jeopardy.
So there's no second yet to your motion, Don?
I know it. Well, you can do that too, Mary.
Uh, there, there's no urgent rush. They, they, if they get a call now, they're still on East Pitts Road and that, everything is fine. The, the third house, they've only put the foundation in it and the house will be delivered until November. So.
Howard, have you been, have you been talking to the developer yourself?
I've been talking to the builder of the house and his, it's a Steadman, it's father and son who are two of the properties up there.
Okay.
Would you just, would you mind sharing the board's concern with them and asking them if they have another suggestion?
Okay.
Cause we would, yeah, that way we could entertain what they would like.
Very good. All right. That's, that's great. I'll, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So I think that was it unless there's any other business to come before the select board this evening.
Yeah, I have one with, with Howard. So you were, uh, previously engaged today, Howard, but the, a nice bouquet of flowers arrived at the town. Are you aware of Ms. Williams that, that's been working with your office?
Melinda Williams.
Yeah. She's a, she's with the state census bureau.
Okay. Yes. Yes. Melinda Williams. Yep.
Yeah. She, uh, she had great things to say about your, your whole office's, uh, cooperative efforts. She was so happy that she brought a potted plant in, a, a nice mom. Uh, you know, basic, basically with a note that, uh, you guys both had helped her out so much.
Oh, that's nice of her.
Made her job so much easier on that, uh, what is it? Sewer billing and whatever.
That's great. I've been around today. I was in, I had a doctor's appointment in Dartmouth, but I'll look forward to tomorrow. But she's a very nice person. We deal with her quite a bit. That's, that's good.
Well, it's a credit, it's a credit to your, uh, your whole listers office that that's, that that's the case. I mean.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Okay. Good. Cause Barbara needs to help me.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, all in favor of? Motion's been made and seconded. Um, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion, the motion carries, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.